Thank you. Good morning. Meeting is now called to order. Items from the public. Records show there was nobody for the, from the public. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
As have it. All in the purchase order of. Any questions for Tracy? There ain't none. There are no internal budget revisions this week. Change of status. Hiring requisition received from the Honorable Anthony Petrucci, County Clerk for Lacy, Durham, as a deputy clerk with an annual salary of forty thousand. That's effective ten one twenty-five. Change of status received from Jen Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Samantha Knoll, Tele- Telecommunicator One, for a grade increase to Telecommunicator Two, with a salary change from fifty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars to fifty-five thousand five hundred and one dollars. That's effective ten one twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Shawn Robinson, Deputy Three, for a step increase for years of service, with a salary change from sixty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars to seventy thousand eight hundred and one dollars. That's effective ten one twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Benjamin Diesel, Deputy Three, for a step increase for years of service, with a salary change from sixty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-eight to seventy thousand eight hundred and one. That's effective ten one twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Lawrence Meeks Corporal, for a step increase for years of service, with a salary change from seventy thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars to seventy-four thousand forty-three dollars. That's effective ten one twenty-five. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Bryce Reinhardt, Deputy Two, for a step increase of years of service, with a salary change from sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars to sixty-four thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. That's effective ten one twenty-five. We have a letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections, for Jessica Lundblad, a pre-recovery coach coordinator, effective nine twenty-three twenty-five. Everyone was present for the September eighteenth meeting, but we can leave that in. We do have a canceled check as presented by the County Clerk's Finance Office. It's hard up to you all here. And bond reduction. Archer's Rock, Phase Three, final plat, VCP number twenty-three oh five dice one seventy, tied to twenty-three oh five dice one seventy-seven, twenty-one oh eight dice two nine zero, and twenty-one oh one dice zero one eight. That's bond number AL one zero three zero three three. And we have a bond reduction for caliber collision. That's our grading in stormwater management. VCP file number twenty-four eleven dice three forty-three, that's tied to twenty-four oh nine dice two sixty-nine, twenty-three oh seven dice two fifty-one, and twenty-four oh one dice zero zero seven seven. That's LOC number one zero zero two nine seven seven. If I have any questions for Brian. The motion to approve the consent agenda.
They're moved.
Second.
They're moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. We don't have anything from the assessor this week. That's a good thing. And Boarding Meeting report.
All right. Kind of had a busy week. Find my spot here. So, started Sunday and Monday. Steve and I went to County Commissioners' meeting in Canane. Lot of good topics, talking about upcoming legislative session. I thought that was a very informative and educational meetings. And, oh, it was good communication between everybody from all the counties. And those are very good events to attend and be a part of, I think. And then came back, and as soon as I got back on Tuesday morning, I had the elevator and electrical inspection in the roundhouse. Elevator passed its inspection. Fire Marshal was there. So, the elevator is cleared and working. Took my first ride, made a little video. And so, we're one step closer to getting that, that open there. All we're waiting on is a little bit of finalization of HVAC, and we should have the go-ahead for the upstairs. It's still in limited capacity at three hundred when we get it, but that, you know, it'll be usable.
It's a beautiful site.
It really is. You know, we need a little bit more cleanup there. We're gonna, we're gonna have some groups in there cleaning up and get this HVAC done in the next week or so, and hopefully get some sort of ribbon cutting or something for, for the upstairs there. That's been a long time coming. Yeah. Then Wednesday, I had CVB meeting yesterday. Things are heading in the right direction with occupancies for, for numbers. Airbnb is at thirty-eight percent. VRBO is at thirty-nine percent. The first up thirteen percent this month, the other up fourteen percent. Hotels this month were sixty-three point eight. That's up five percent from last year at the same time. We're still down on the year four point eight percent, but at the direction we're headed, things are, are really looking good for, for the rest of the year. That's all good. There is the, they voted to go ahead again this year with the Fright Maps and the Christmas Prism app. These are, these are two apps that come up. You, you can download the apps. What it is, is to get people driving around and seeing things in the county. And people can also sign up to compete. If you decorate your house with Christmas lights or with Halloween decorations, you can submit in this map, and they, you know, you pull it up like a GPS, and it has pictures with little logos or icons, and you can drive around and see these decorated places, and you can vote on them. And the neat thing about it is you can only vote when you're in a certain proximity of that house. So, you can't just be Aunt Sally in North Carolina and voting for your, your guy to win. So, there's, there are cash prizes with that. First prize is five hundred, second is third, and, uh, third, third is one hundred. So, that'd be for Halloween and for Christmas. The Halloween app is called Fright Maps app, and Christmas is Christmas Prism. Governor's Conference coming up September twenty-ninth to the second for tourism. October, Fall Food Fest, second of October, Main Street. You have the Oktoberfest at the Poorhouse Park, September twenty-seventh, which is, I guess, this weekend. And there were a hundred and seventeen visitors through there in August. And then I had a meeting last night with the roundhouse. We met with CEC, the architects, and we discussed the priorities of the property and where we want, what direction we wanted to go with them. They gave us a preliminary. We sat down, a small group of us, and went over where we thought the main priorities needed to be and what we'd like to be at on spending of cost to get those priorities done. Because we do have this seven hundred and fifty thousand from HUD to use. Of course, we don't get all of it. It goes in so many directions. But hopefully, we can at least get the concrete floors in in both buildings. That, that's the goal there. And then that would get, and, and the ADA doors for the downstairs. So, that would put us solidly with three usable, wellusable buildings.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Oh, good morning. I'm feeling a little underdressed sitting next to Nate D. this morning. He's looking quite dapper.
I'm dressed up for Penny's party.
Yes, that's nice. That's nice. So, I didn't have any board meetings this week for the county. I did have an unofficial meeting with a few of our state representatives or local representatives, delegates, and just talking about some priorities for the upcoming legislative session. You know, just talking about things that they think will be priorities in the next session, and talking about things that I think are priorities for the county and things we need to work on. So, it was nice to sit and have lunch with those gentlemen and discuss those things. But that's really all that I've had this week, but I'm excited to hear about your all's meetings that you had in Charleston. So, I will sit here quietly and wait for those reports.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hardey, good.
I had no meetings. I'll sit quietly too.
Kelly.
Typically not.
Yeah.
Whether I have meetings or not.
That's right.
I did miss my theme service meeting yesterday because it is Charleston, but I wanted to report that I did attend after the meeting last Thursday, Thursday, at the HRA Center, over at the Center. And they honored, honored, uh, the heroes this year that is honored. Connie has been donated this time as a DJ to all the dances over there for years and years now, probably two decades. Well, well deserved honor to them. Obviously, the, uh, they're set up as a fundraiser, and they expect the net to exceed ten thousand dollars, which was only second year. Also have an endless tour to meet these people, you know, this, this last month, and looking forward to that. As far as travel this week, H P, a wingman over there, we have to go Sunday to go to Canane. We had meetings, uh, Sunday afternoon, afternoon and evening. And then we had meetings all, all day Monday morning. Legislative thing, that of course is a big topic in the state field. Everyone is paid a hundred percent to contribute, and I do want to make sure that they, uh, go back, because obviously the other, the, the top priorities for the whole association is that the role back is, is there as well. So, you know, our two biggest requests are the top two priorities for the state. A lot of the conversation that we really did was about the DIA and think that is, uh, is too much. So, we're pleased that we're not involved in that. But one of my favorite parts of the meeting, I've done this over the years, I've been involved. They bring a lawyer in named Wendy Greer. Did I pronounce that right? Wendy Greed, I'm sorry. G R E E D, Greed. She's with, uh, Coleman, Dallas, London, Brown, and totally. And she comes in, and we just have like an hour and a half question and answer period with her. She, most, most counties don't have the ability financially to hire their own attorney, like we do. And so, they contract their services. She represents the county association. Comes in and takes a lot of hard questions. If she doesn't know the answer, she admits that she doesn't, and we'll look find out for her. She'll get back to us. I guess that was very interesting. Canane is one of the great places in the state, and he encouraged me to go down to Thomas, uh, West Virginia, my first time in my life. I've been up there so many times, I never went to Thomas. We had lunch at the Purple Fiddle. We listened to live music. Enjoyed ourselves, and I got to see Thomas, West Virginia, first time. And then I got back Monday evening, and then we got to the afternoon to Charleston. I won't speak for Gary and Eddie. They can speak for themselves. But our first meeting was, uh, yesterday morning at ten o'clock with the Secretary of Transportation, Rumball. H P and I met with him in March. We only had, the only other person in the room was the Deputy Secretary.
Michael Demers.
But we had a very candid, open conversation for probably nine fifteen, maybe longer. I'll be honest, and I think they'll agree with me, because they're extremely skilled. I left there very frustrated. It seemed like the theme of the thing is we don't have a lot of money. And a little bit of money that we have for, for these projects, we're gonna link with some of these that have matching funds to help us get done. So, you know, here we are, the county trying to find, identify monies for our sheriff's department, for our fire department, and the DMs, and for our nine one one, and all this. Now, we're gonna have to try to find the revenue. Be able to get a project from our leadership, I think. I was very frustrated, you say, with this. At the same time, I, I guess it's good that they did call us to meet with us, so a lot of conversations will be taken. And then later in the afternoon, we had a meeting with the Secretary of the, uh, Secretary of Work, couple of his staff members. I got to finally meet Joe Gresh, who I talked to on the Sunday, kind of, and then. The, the good news there is, is that they, they finally do have a statewide general permit in place now. They've been working on for several years. I think that was why our individual request to get a new permit was delayed all this time. They're not just saying to the, the permitees that you have to, you have to join the statewide general permit, they're making it optional. So, I think there needs to be discussion here in the next fifteen months about what their, what their stormwater district, which is the best direction to go, whether to join the general permit to the member, or still actively seek that individual permit. I think they said they would be going to get access to it. The question I had was, uh, whether to change the responsibilities of the county regardless. And the answer to that was no. Whether we could, I would then do the permit as a member of the general, but that, our responsibilities in terms of stormwater, and still are actively being exchanged. I was pleased to hear that. So, you know, we are going to be, regardless, whether it's individual or general, we are now going to be the co-permitees that were first secured for the public permit. Co-permitees with the stormwater district. We have decisions. It won't be the stormwater district to make that call. We'll, we'll be involved in that decision as well. We had a chance too, and I won't mention any names, but we, we have some other issues in the county with newer situations on, on developments in our county that, that don't have, uh, public store. They were built by contractors who put in their own treatment situation plan. And a lot of those are malfunctioning, haven't worked. One particular hasn't worked for fifteen years now. Problem is, is that they were permitted by the, the Western Health Department, the health department, and not by the county. So, the dilemma is that they want us to take them over, but with no, you know, funding resources, or desire to. So, we spoke about that, and they seem very cooperative in that respect. It seemed like they want to give us, I, I told them we needed years and two years to, to make it work if we take these over, and we should give us a grace there to do that, so it's something that threatens us, and we should definitely do it. And then also, they have revenue. They have sources of funding there to address these issues, that we hope that they would help us fund. And so, I, I, I left that meeting feeling pretty positive, and I thought the response was good. I was very pleased with the meeting that we did. And you guys can add to that. I mean, it was worth the trip there. And I, I think anytime you can meet folks face to face, it's a whole lot of those, talking to them on the phone. I, I, I would have to make some face to face kind of stuff. Secretary Ward was very open. He said, "Call me at any time on my cell phone, and I will help you out." So, that's, that's, that's very good.
Yeah, communication with that agency was extremely good. You know, sometimes some of the concerns is the applications or, or permit requests get sent to Charleston, and it's likely fall into a, a deep dark hole. And this gentleman assured us that if, if we can move forward with some of these projects, that they would get the full attention and get, get the concerns addressed and back out the door. Because some of these things drag on for six months at a time, and.
I've got to a year at a time trying to get a new permit.
Yeah, but that's just not acceptable. And it's, it seems like this gentleman is, is understanding of that and wants to be able to work with us. You know, as, as far as DOH, I think they found themselves in a pretty tight spot with finances. But once again, I, I appreciate the fact that they were willing to take their time to sit with us and, and, and have these discussions. So, that's, that's where it has to start. You, you have to have these discussions. So, um, on Friday, speaking of different secretaries, we met with Secretary Buffington with the Department of Military Affairs, who's in charge of the State Police, Fire Marshal, all those emergency management. There are some concerns over the rotation of the nine one one calls to our sheriff's office and the Western Union State Police. Uh, we had an extremely good meeting. I, I do believe it was productive. And we just happened to find out, as far as the rotation's concerned, what is going to be best to be able to serve our public. You know, neither agency has the staffing that we need, you know, and I feel very strongly that now's the time that we come together, not push apart. So, I'm hoping that, uh, that, that that occurs. And like I said, Secretary Buffington, we appreciate his time. Senator Baird was also involved in that meeting, so it was, it was a good meeting. Steve and I were actually on WRNR. Tuesday. So, you know, that's always a good discussion. You know, we kind of go around the world with stuff, wherever, wherever they want to talk about it, so that, that was good. And that's going to kind of finish up our time.
I'd like to ask Gary if he had any comments or ideas to like to share with us.
I'm, I'm, ditto to, to what you said. I was, I was a bit frustrated with the position of the Department of Transportation on how to get priority in areas of upgrade, uh, in, in the county. Seems like they've taken this similar to a particular Senate House bill that was passed in the past lady in the most recent past legislature. Uh, but the meeting and discussions with the E P, I thought were, were very effective. Seemed like, and, sorry that I had to walk out, but the, the secretary made a statement that I, at the end of the meeting, commented on. He literally said on his seat at the lead of the table that, you know, counties need to manage counties, and they were all about helping with some local control. So, that was polar opposite of the first meeting. But it's going on with this. I, I, I always encourage the five of you and Mr. Hardy, who spent six years down there, it's good for your faces to be there. It's good for the folks to see you and know you as opposed to those people from East of Canada that never come down. I know it's a long couple days, but ten hours of travel for two hours of meeting, but it's well worth it in my opinion.
All right. I'd like to take a, just to take a second here and thank you guys for going down and taking those meetings and talking to those secretaries and kind of move things forward. And, and you guys are, are being very cordial, being very friendly and very cordial. But it is absolutely ridiculous that the Western Union Department of Highways would come to counties and ask for them to have local buy-in for roads. When we have zero, zero ability to generate revenues to put towards roads. Roads are, are, are a function of the state. They've always been a function of the state. They've never been functions of counties. Counties have no money to put towards roads, nor do we want it. That is, that's their deal. They've had it. They control it. Do a better job with it. To go to have a meeting with Western Union Department of Highways and for them to tell you, "We'll work with your projects if you have local buy-in, but oh, by the way, we'll give you no revenues. You keep no sales tax. You keep no fuel tax. You keep no ways to generate revenue on a county to put towards roads." Is ridiculous. So, I appreciate your all's time. I appreciate your all's candor and, and being cordial. I'm not going to be so cordial. That is absolutely ridiculous.
Frustrated.
Frustrated.
I'd like to know the amount of money that this county generates in fuel gas.
So, there was a, there was a, um, I'm trying to find that answer. I was just.
They said they didn't know it.
Well, let, let, let me.
The gasoline taxes, state taxes, thirty-seven point five percent cents per gallon. Federal tax is eighteen point five per gallon. I guarantee you, it could be more than that.
Revenue?
Revenue that's probably more than, much or more than small cars.
Mr. T J, Mr. T J Meadows just did, did a story out of Metro News. Wrote it, wrote a story that seven counties in the state of West Virginia generate fifty percent of the revenue. Guess who was number two on that list? Berkeley County. Canal County being number one, Berkeley County being number two. Generate, seven counties generate fifty percent of all of the revenue generated in the state. So, you know, we send, and, and listen, that was my biggest fight when I was there. We send tons and tons of revenue to Charleston to get very little back. We don't have the state troopers we need. We don't have the Department of Highways that we need. Now, the DOH says we need to kick in local money for roads? I mean, it's, I don't know how much more ridiculous it could get. I really don't. But that's my rant for the day. But I do appreciate you gentlemen.
I have one more comment on the stormwater. When we get a new permit or if we're trying to get a new permit, it's understood that they have to get the right permit. Go to, go to, basically order.
The urban, the urban area.
That's what it will be. It might be a kind of a permit. And that, that came across clearly then.
So there'll be a restructure, you think?
There will be.
Of the permit, or that's the amount that citizens pay.
And I think that's the best outcome that we can ask for.
And, and the stormwater district, they're, like Gary and I have been working with them, with, with, both of their hearts. And there's, there's two permits. The structure is being, and you guys are every way to replace the district instead of the flat fee. Most, most communities have faced on previous, sort of, sort of, and, 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 and. And, uh, so, uh, we'll have that option to go through. And we'll have a strong voice in there every person every time. Yeah, they, they could, this could eliminate these in some parts of the county and reduce the, 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 other parts of the county. But if it were to, uh, was to ask from you on this, uh, side of, uh, we'll, we'll have to look at that. But if it's being studied and, uh, and our time and effort on that, it's very, very, uh, uh. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, uh, we do have a new application, we see from Gail Moxley for the Berkeley County, uh, Senior Service Board. Uh, if you could reach out to her and.
She comes in, uh, very highly recommended. She's actually been helping funding, uh, the, uh, already the last couple of years. It's going to be a great course. Probably enough moving to, uh, appoint her to base together, ever.
Gail's been a fixture in the community for a long time. She's been involved in a lot of good things.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'd like, uh, reappointment, uh, package sent out to the LEPC members of Jason Hoover and Jennifer Sheetron. Those are the only two on the LEPC. Okay. All right, right on the money. Next up, Mr. Brad Crowe, candidate for Berkeley County Fire Service Board. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good, how are you all?
All right. Brad, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself and then we'll just have a few questions.
Sounds good. So as you heard, my name's Bradley Crowe, uh, Assistant Chief Head of Fire Department. Thirty-three years old, have a wife, Ashley. Uh, been married almost six, seven years. I have a wild four-year-old. His name's Cooper. He's a true country kid. Um, been the fire serv-, volunteer fire service for almost sixteen years. October makes sixteen. Um, I've been an officer in that organization for thirteen years before I was even eligible to drive the fire truck. Uh, six or seven years now, I've been the Assistant Chief of the Fire Station. My grandfather established Head of Fire Department in nineteen fifty-six on my father's side. And then my mother's father, my other grandfather, who's deceased, obviously, he, uh, helped establish the EMS later down the road. Um, I've been worked for Berkeley County Fire for almost twelve years now. In Feb-, in February, I was at one point the youngest hired ever under Mr. Go-Knowar until the last hiring process you all did, and I got beat by two people at point. So, uh, I'm only the second ever in my family to ever do it as a career. Um, I helped with the Recruit Class One. I helped handle the, uh, Special Operations with the hazmat and the boat I'm in charge of for Berkeley County, so.
Got a good name on your shirt there. I like that.
I appreciate it. I've known you for a long time, even though, so.
Mr. Boyd? Well, um, first I'd like to thank you for applying. Um, and, uh, if you're applying to this board, is there anything you'd like to see changed or, or direction you'd like to see the board go?
So the fire service is always changing. There's always ways you can improve. There's always a ways you can do things different. Sometimes it's good to stay the old ways and sometimes it's a way to go the new ways. I like to see that we can establish new programs of getting bids instead of everybody buying different types of things. We can all establish of between hose and fire, fire equipment. We can establish bids in that to where if you need it and you have it in your budget light item, you can go get it and you know it's available. One of the biggest problems we have right now is hose. Mercedes hose, depending on the time of the year, it could be out a year. But if we can establish a bid process for a different type of, type of hose, we can get it faster if, because we need it. Or fire departments need that. That's one of the biggest things that I believe that we can move forward with and not have to be different.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you for your willingness to, to want to serve on this board. And second of all, thank you for your years of service in the, in the fire service. Uh, I don't really have any questions for you. I mean, I, I know your background and where you come from. And, and, uh, I know you only want good things for the fire service in, in Berkeley County.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's the biggest thing. That's, it's for the people.
All about taking care of people.
It's not, it's not about us. It's never going to be about us.
I tell my children all the time, certain people are born with a heart for service. I, I don't know what makes it that way, but some people are and, you know, firefighters, policemen, EMS, uh, they have a heart for service. And I, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah.
This gentleman here does, I can tell you. Mr. Boyd?
Well, after listening to, uh, to your resume that you read, I said, I don't think there's a question I need to ask you, but, uh.
I have one, it's okay, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for your willingness to want to serve and, and, uh, it does mean a lot to, uh, to this county to have people that, that take it upon themselves to want to give back and, you know, because they have a passion for it. So thank you.
Born, born and raised in this county. I'm not going anywhere.
Same here.
So I know this county, I like the back of my hand, and that's why I'd rather, I'll stay here.
Everybody asks me, you know, when you're going to retire? Oh, not that I'm going to retire, it's just I'm not going to do quite as much as I have been doing. Because I like, uh, I like what I do. And I, and I can see that in you. Kevin?
I know his parents, I know his grandparents, I know all about this crowd, they must want to take that to, uh, to get to the head of the.
Brad, you understand, uh, on this board, you're making business decisions, uh, for the fire service board. You're, you have to be able to listen to what the chiefs say and figure out what truly needs to be done sometimes. But we don't always have the direct picture as presented. Sometimes it's a, a different shade. Um, so it's, I know that you've worked in every firehouse in this county, so you understand the need of a lot of those different departments. And they do all have their own certain needs. Uh, so fairness is really important. And that, when we look at one, we have to also look at all five to make sure that, that we can treat them all as fair as we can be. And make sure that they have the equipment and the facilities that they need to be able to provide the services that they've been providing for a very long time. So that would be my only thing is these are, are business decisions that need to be made in fairness.
I, I agree, I agree. You, you've known me for a long time. You know my money management skills for a long time.
Are you tight?
Yeah, tight. So I understand, but there's a difference between being tight and a dis routine, being not, and being frugal with your money. Every fire department in this county can operate with the same engine. It's an engine. But not every place needs a ladder truck and a squad in the same firehouse. You can't provide that service. Not everybody's good at one thing, not everybody's good at the other thing. And I look at the impact, uh, plan that was put out and it's, it's a good thing. I think in my opinion, you know, it could be revised a little bit, you know, like we're talking about putting stuff in, in this fire station. I don't know the actual date. I can't remember, but like South Berkeley already has a squad, you know? But you want to put possibly a ladder truck in there. And I know it can possibly be looked at, but there's people that work there and volunteer there have to be good at two services. So spacing that stuff out through the county, in my opinion, is what needs to happen instead of just loading one place up all the time. And it also helps out with, with funding and helps out with, with staffing for those people to provide that service for what they're doing. And that's, that's how I believe that I can benefit from being in these fire departments and knowing different areas and knowing different traits of these places. I think that's what, one of the biggest things that I can understand. I know some of the apparatus people that, for the sellers, I have a good connection with them to understand that stuff. And that's just a small part of apparatus, you know, it goes to the, everything else, the, the money management, uh, making sure everything is, that everything is in line, that every fire department has what they need to operate for career and volunteer service.
Very good. Anything else, Brad?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Thank you for coming in. Up, delegate. Morning, sir.
Good morning. I know all of you commissioners are aware that, um, a couple, uh, years ago, we found out that, um, there were a couple subdivisions that are in both Berkeley and Jefferson Counties where the surveyors didn't put the correct county line on their flats. And the planning commission has approved those. And there are about a dozen, uh, houses, they're all, it's all residential property that have been treated as Jefferson County, um, properties for the past twenty years. They've paid taxes there. They've gotten their services there. But then it, uh, it came about a couple of years ago when the Secretary of State's office then I noticed that the, uh, there was a precinct in some of these, in even a delegate district that was supposed to go along the county line but didn't. Why is that? And it's because of this, and we've been going back and forth on how to resolve the situation. Essentially, what the plan is, is rather than going to the legislature who has the authority to change county lines, is to petition the courts, um, to essentially redraw the county line, claiming there's a dispute, which the court has the authority to do. If there's a dispute over the county line, which would simply just change those properties that have been treated as Jefferson County properties, and put them in Jefferson County for all, for all purposes. Right now, they're voting in Berkeley County, paying taxes in Jefferson County. And it certainly doesn't make sense. It could only lead to further problems. And this is just a joint effort between Berkeley and Jefferson Counties to, to resolve that issue. I'm, I'm pretty sure that all of the residents out there support this.
How much is Jefferson County paying us for this property?
Two.
I'm just, I'm just getting.
That was, uh.
Well, we can have big builds and roads, but maybe, maybe.
I brought that up. I mean, I said, well, you should exchange some. If they want this, we should get some.
Yeah, but there was none the opposite, right?
No, no. No, the lines, the lines were, were parallel. It's a straight county line. The lines were parallel, but in one neighborhood, they were about two hundred feet off and one about a hundred feet off. Which caused some houses to be in the wrong county, so. This is the easiest way, rather than, if you tried to bring everything over to Berkeley County, you'd have to go through land records, use trusts and bring them over. It'd be a mess. That's all this is, and this just gives, lets the public know, gives the authority to, to me to work with them on, on this petition.
Good. Anybody have any further questions for Anthony? Need a, a motion to approve and give the presidency authority to sign.
I'm moved.
Second.
Take any further stuff? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, Mr. Wine?
Thank you, Mr. President. You have, uh, a proclamation in front of you, uh, for, um, for Ms. Penny Shul for several years of service. I think she started what in two thousand twenty-two, something like that, right there? Um, so Penny, Penny gave notice about six weeks ago that she decided that after her seventeen-plus years of experience, she felt it was time to go home and support her husband, take care of him every day, breakfast, lunch and dinner.
So lots of things to happen now, but you do have a proclamation for Commissioner Teuches to read it? I do, and I'd like to ask, uh, Vice President Catlett to read the proclamation.
Proclamation for Penny L. Shul. I don't know what the L. Shul is. I thought, I thought that was probably it.
This, this.
Whereas Penny L. Shul began working for Berkeley County in two thousand and eight as an administrative assistant in the office of the Berkeley County Commission. Whereas Penny was promoted in twenty eighteen to the position of Office Administrator, overseeing office personnel, assisting with human resources and many other duties as a staff, all while documenting the actions and proceedings of the county's governing body. And whereas Penny worked with three county administrators and thirteen elected members of the county's governing body, helping with transitions from a three-member county commission to a five-member county council in twenty eleven, and then to a five-member county commission in twenty twenty-three. And whereas Penny's unshakable professionalism and institutional knowledge of county practices, policies and procedures assisted greatly in the operation of Berkeley County Government. And whereas Penny's more than seventeen years of dedicated public service to Berkeley County is worthy of recognition, recognition and commendation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission recognizes Penny Shul for her years of service to Berkeley County, wishes her all the best in retirement. Adopted this twenty-fifth day of September forty-fourth.
We need a motion to adopt a resolution. They're moved.
Second.
They're moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. And I see we have some guests, uh, with us today. Would anybody like to come forward and have a few words, uh? Yes, sir, please. Don't, don't run up, don't run, just take your time.
I, I had a whole list of reasons.
Um, but Gary reminded me that the Dunn Building closes at five. Uh, and some things, the statute of limitations never run out. Um, I, you need for, you need me to identify myself.
Yeah.
Um, Alan Davis, I used to work here. Um, well, I, uh, you know, I wanted to talk about the time that, that Penny locked herself in this, the supply room and we didn't realize she was gone until two days later. Um, but I, I, I won't bring that up. Um, or, or, you know, the, the widow, the widow Miller, you certainly won't, we won't talk about that. Um, so, I, 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 I had the misfortune of working with Penny for many years. And, you know, the stories go on and on, but, um, Penny, you, you, you will be missed. Um, Penny, Penny was the, was, always had my back. Um, she always was quick to tell me when I was wrong, um, and, and I appreciated that. So which meant she spent a lot of time in my office. Um, she, she was the heart and soul of, and, and I'm sure she continues to be the heart and soul of the county. And, um, was always very supportive and always very protective of the, of the county council and now commission. So, um, I know she will be missed. Um, and, and Gary, her husband, certainly has my condolences. You know, one Gary gets rid of her and the other Gary picks her up. So Penny, thank you for your service to the county and for, for all that you, you've done for the, the county constituents and county commission and county council and, and me in particular. I, you're, you're very much loved and appreciated.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Uh, can you, retirement?
Penny, um, you've been over, over here since I started. It's been more than nine years now. And, uh, I'm going to miss you a lot. You've, you've always been available for me, all the millions of questions that I have. Um, I've been able to go into your office and complain about Alan Davis and Gary Wine and. You've, uh, you've kept. You've, you've kept it to yourself, I think. But, but congratulations on your retirement. You are a wonderful person. I love you and I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you, Tim.
Penny, since I got here, you've really been kind of the lifeblood of the administrative office over here, and I think there will be a big hole when you leave, and I just wanna thank you for your, all your years of service, wish you luck in your retirement. I mentioned to my wife this morning, and it's Penny's last meeting, and my daughter Isabel chimed in, and she was like, "Oh, Penny? Oh, she's got the nicest bathroom. It's Penny's palace." We will always have that sign there to, to memorialize you. Appreciate everything and good luck.
Anybody else? Yes, please.
We've been together a long time. I miss you. Crazy miss you, but it could be empty in here, you know, this thing here. Oh, gosh. Oh, gosh. We had some good times, we really did, and I just, I'm so thankful for, for being a part of that, and now being a part of this one, and just thankful for all of this.
Thank you, Tracy. Julie? Julie, would you like to speak? Go on. You, you can say, you can talk from there if you wish. I, I was wondering about that. Any commissioners have anything they'd like to say about Penny?
I'll say this, every time we go to do a radio show, the host wants to talk about Penny. Their thing goes through Penny every year. But when I first got on the commission, Alan was here for six months, my first time in duty, and what sticks in my mind is, I want y'all to know that she'll fall, fall on the sword for you, for all of you anytime. If it's true, it's true.
I would say that you were the boss of the back hall. I mean, that, that hallway, there was a lot of action in that back hallway. You, you the boss. All right, so you truly will be missed. You, you will help anybody do anything. You will take on any requests from the county administrators that needs to be done and do it with professionalism. But I, I, I would have to say that you are probably the most dedicated and most loyal employees that I've had the pleasure to work around. And that means a lot, because a lot of people sometimes will try to come at you, but you always try to protect, you know, this body as best you could. We appreciate that. Go ahead, Paul. So Mr. Bentley was not able to be here today, but I do, I do have some comments that, that he sent. My pleasure to be able to read him, which as typical lawyer fashion, it starts out, "Well." Well, as you can see him standing there, "Well. I am so very sorry that I'm unable to be present to pay tribute to Penny today. Five of us from high school days are, are together at the request of one of us who is being ravaged by a disease which is going to end his life soon. This will be our last trip together as a lifetime friends, and I didn't want to miss it. I know Penny will understand all of this, certainly as we all, as we all would. Penny always understood the important needs of those two of us. She helped over the years. Her service made me look pretty good most of the time. I fared well with cases I took to the Supreme Court on behalf of Berkeley County, thanks in part to Penny's understanding and help. She was always there when needed, and whatever hour, expected or not, and always with a smile. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, Penny. Your extraordinary work ethic, your ever-present good humor, your understanding and your ability made us a better team. I am proud to have been a coworker and proud to be your friend. Paulie and I wish you a very wonderful, long retirement. Over and out. Our friend.
All right.
Mr. President, you have a, have something, small token?
If you would present that, please.
I would. It, I may. Much like everyone else, Penny was here just soon after I started, but let's start with her delivery of, "Hey, I quit. I don't want to work for you anymore." It, she came in ruffled feathers, mad as a hornet, red face, and said, "You know, I'm out of here. I don't like you people." But she, she delivered it, and she said, "I'm not gonna say much more, 'cause I'm getting emotional." She took off down the hall, but when you have a backbone person in an organization, and I gotta tell you, I was here the day Alan retired, and watching her struggle with saying goodbye, it's, it's hard, right? You, you have people that become part of your family. So 17 years, and Steve started with, you cannot find, you cannot train, and you cannot instill in people the integrity that Penny Shul has, right? She literally, literally would go to battle for any five of you. She'd kill for him. I think she might smack somebody for me, but she, she, she truly, truly, truly is a team player. Her, her commitment to perfection, while we all make mistakes, she, she cares more for what you look like than what she did. Every given action she took, her involvement from the intricate processes of personnel, her involvement to audits, her involvement to the preparation that makes the five of you, you know, puts you at a level in the state that is one of the best commissions around. I mean, that's all driven and all supported by her. She, she isn't the only reason, but she is absolutely a cog in the works that makes it all come together. She's followed by someone who, who really cares and has really learned a lot from her. Aleah sits in here, that has picked up a goodly portion of what Penny does. And I gotta tell you, watching them work together for the last year, kind of how Penny embraced, and I think she, she saw opportunities, and Aleah has done a lot of the same. But I'll tell you, I offered to her when she turned it in, I said, "Hey, Pen, as you start to shed these duties, it's important for me that you just give it to them, and then you let them do it, and if they're failing, you help them." Well, she took that serious. She hasn't worked 20 minutes in the last six weeks. But Pen, from, from everybody here, to include the commission, a, a small token of our appreciation, after 17 years of dedicated hard work and countless contribution, it's hard to imagine this place without you. Your knowledge, kindness and team spirit has left a lasting impact on all of us. We are truly grateful for everything you have done. As you embark on this exciting new chapter and take care of your husband, we wish you endless joy, relaxation and adventures. Thank you and for all you've done, everyone here. Please do. Aleah. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Penny, would you have anything?
I just want to thank all of you here. I'm here to share, I've just been amazing. I'm thinking I've been a better place to work. I love all of you. Everyone has made my life so wonderful every day, it's just blessed. But I left the cable company in years, it was so hard, so stressful. I thought it just wasn't stressful at times too, but when I came here, I said, it was amazing because people said, "Thank you, I appreciate that." And it was so different, such a different atmosphere. The work here was a family, it was great, and I had so many friends along the way, and I would, I would fall on the sword for anyone here. Berkeley County is wonderful. Everything that I have worked for has been great, some better than others, but most, every one of them I have loved, I've loved working for. I've brought something to my life. I've just enjoyed every single day. It's quite so hard to go. I'm ready, I'm ready for this new chapter, but I will miss everyone so much. And all of you have touched my lives in so many ways, and been there for me, has supported me through everything, and I can't thank you enough for everything everybody has done for me. But I love you all, and I will miss you all, but I'm ready for my new chapter, you know, I will miss all of you guys.
I do have one thing. You make sure that the right one has my phone number, because there's been a few times that I've gotten a call that says, "Where are you?" "Why aren't you here?" To be here, so make sure they have the right phone number.
We have a, a former commissioner, Commissioner Barnhart, would you like to say a few words with Penny's last day on the, on the bench?
I'll put you at Barnhart.
I'm surprised he's up this early.
I'm at home, honey.
Good morning.
I'm waiting for those days.
I didn't think what you were gonna say today?
No.
Oh.
I'm just glad to see you all here and in good health, dressed up nice, that's good.
Look at HD.
Yeah.
I dress for the party.
Yeah, he's going formal. Penny, we've worked together for 12 years, through three county administrators, what, 10 county commissioners? I don't know.
13 in proclamation.
Oh, really? Thank you. Yeah. It's been a rough night. And.
Don't tell anybody what you were doing.
Well.
Better yet, don't show us.
Well, the other half isn't here, so I can't, e- even though she's coming. And through those 12 years, you have been the most considerate, friendly, concerned, helpful person in the county system. I've relied on you for various things, particularly with the local government advisory committee, where you acted as an intermediary between them and me, and all the other things that you've done for me, and I've greatly appreciated it, and I hope you'll enjoy your retirement. I'm enjoying your retirement. I'm not missing this place one bit. Well, you will. I'm feeling a little worried about Gary, but, you know, that's something that he's gonna have to, have to deal with. Yeah. Yeah. So enjoy your retirement, have fun, and Meals and Wheels is looking for volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, well, let's get a picture with Penny's plaque and, oh, everybody can kind of hid away, but we will have executive session today, so if, if small break, you can get some pictures. Alright, we're back in session. There will be action taken.
Mr. President, yeah, Mr. President, I make the motion to give the president of the Berkeley County Commission the authority to sign a purchase agreement for real estate at 8256 Winchester Avenue, entrance of the Inwood Park, and the ability to close the signing documents for the purchase price of $225,000.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Can I say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, it's happy, thank you. There is no other business for today.